Evening, everyone. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our Monday, March 27th, 2023. It's been a long day, folks, and it's Monday. We're gonna start out with the consent agenda. Millie?
Approval of payroll, March 17th, 2023. Approval of claims, March 23rd, 2023. Approval of minutes for February 27th, 2023.
Okay. We don't need a, we don't need a motion to...
We don't?
Yeah.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Commissioners, GIS property casualty insurance renewal. Gentlemen? Now, just remember, it's 5:00, 5:30. It's Monday night.
These are good guys.
So, keep it to about 45 minutes?
That's right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt Weber, General Insurance Services.
Yeah, Charlie Keane, General Insurance Services. Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, we're here tonight to discuss the property and casualty insurance renewal coming up on April 10th. We will be starting the sixth full year of our partnership as Insurance and Risk Management Professional Consulting Services. Started way back in 2017, if you can believe it. We've had a lot of progress over those years in terms of growing into a more high-performing, safe culture from the top down in the county, safer employees. And it's due to everyone's efforts throughout the departments and their staff, starting, obviously, with you folks up here. Been a lot of, a lot of hard work and a lot of good results. So, we thank everyone for their time and efforts in that front. That's what got us here. We look to continue those efforts, use all available resources that we can offer, and continue down that path. So, we are pleased to bring forward a program renewal that is very favorable and in direct correlation to everyone's efforts. So, tonight, we seek formal approval for the 2023-2024 Property and Casualty Insurance Program Renewal. The program itself, we are landing at a renewal total premium, $1,245,586. That represents just under a 2% rate increase, which is phenomenal, given the marketplace, especially in public sector. And the rest of that is exposure increase, which is the things that are being insured. Autos, property values, some budget increases, things like that. Open it up to any questions?
Scott, you've had a chance to sit in these meetings and looking over. So has Barb. You've been pretty active with it. You want to weigh in on it?
I, I think that we've done a great job. GIS has done a great job, and I am going to move to approve the GIS Property and Casualty Insurance Renewal.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. It's pretty painless, wasn't it?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We have a memorandum of understanding between the Indiana Dunes National Park, Porter County Board of Commissioners, and the Porter County Convention Recreation and Visitors Commission. Dave?
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Laurel, I come before you tonight with two documents we would ask your acquiescence in. As you well know, the visitor's center that is well-attended of late.
Yeah.
How many visitors have we had so far this year?
So, our first year to break 100,000 was 2016, and last year, we almost went to 200,000. We had 193,000, so we've almost doubled since 16.
I've been in it twice since the first year. Both times was full. A lot of people.
Yeah. It's amazing.
Working hard, yeah.
I have to admit that I underestimated what it meant to become a national park. It just brings people, and it's wonderful that we're showing off Porter County. But what, in the past, hasn't been wonderful is dealing with the General Services Administration, which is the federal agency that takes care of all the leases and everything in buildings. They've been problematic to deal with. So, we rejoiced here a while back when, for whatever reason, and Laurel, I may have more of the particulars, they have abdicated the responsibility on this particular building. They lease it from us and given it back to the National Park Service, who we deal with regularly and have a much better, longer relationship with. That has precipitated, though, because the handoff occurred at the last minute, the inability to get a full lease negotiated and agreed to before the old one ran out. So, on the lease side of the documents that were here tonight, we're asking for a 13-month extension of the existing lease that expired to get everybody's juices flowing in terms of the National Park Service involvement in the building, which you own. The other document we're here is a bifurcation of the process that the National Lakeshore wanted, and that's the MOU. The memorandum of understanding with no reference to rent sets and lays out the relationship between the two agencies, us and the, and the National Lakeshore. And that's kind of set in the table. Laurel, I can add more particulars because she has dealt directly with the folks at the National Park Service.
Yeah, so one of the biggest issues with GIS was we wanted to go into a long-term lease, both us and the National Park, and they just were not doing it. What they would do is they'd get to that mark when it was time to negotiate, and they didn't have enough time. So, they said, "Let's just do another extension for three years." And we've been operating under this extension model, and neither National Park or us want to do that. We would like to have at least a 10- to 20-year lease. In addition to that, the National Park had to pay a fee for GIS to actually negotiate on their behalf. So, they would like to keep that internal, you know, keep it towards the park. So, those are the two drivers that why we wanted to get away from GIS and just go directly to the National Park. Now, keep in mind, when we say we're negotiating with the National Park, there is a leasing unit out of Colorado that leases for the National Park itself. So, our local National Park can be a part of those discussions, but the lease itself will be with the National Park Leasing Office that's à la Colorado itself.
So, that's why it's so easy to do, right?
Yeah.
This is something we've done in the past.
We've done it regularly through, really, ever since the National Park Service joined us in that building. They have paid rent, as they should. And we have been, before the commissioners, probably more, not that we don't enjoy seeing you, but more regularly than maybe we wanted to because we were constantly getting from GSA extensions and renewals on extensions and renewals, and nobody wasn't, nobody knew who was on first base. And like Laurel, I said, we're confident now with the National Park Service because they wanted, they want to be confident that they know they've got a place with us, and we want them there. I mean, they are a driver of people, and, of course, we do the best we can to tell people who arrive at our visitor's center that we, then in Porter County, we are more than just the Dunes. You know, there's a lot to do in Porter County, and that's our chance to grab these people is when they come into the visitor's center.
Well, and then, three years ago, instead of GSA negotiating with us, they sent us to the Army Corps of Engineer out of Detroit, who knew nothing. And so, now, you're trying to explain to them why we have, we have a unique partnership that's not that common in the U.S. So, then, you have to try to explain to them why this lease is different than other leases. So, this should hopefully make things a lot easier in the future.
And I'm completely digressing. I won't take very long of your time. But we were, I was categorically told by GSA that we were a unique, special, extraordinary, and they weren't really happy with the relationship where the National Park Service rented from a local government the building. Not a month later, I went to what back then was called a destination wedding in Montana, and we drove through Yellowstone, and we stopped at the visitor's center. And guess what it was? It was a combination of the local government and the National Park Service. So, they didn't know what, who was on first base. So, we're, I'm sorry, I'm digressing. What we're asking you to do tonight is approve the MOU, which you have, so that we then have a framework to work forward collaboratively with the National Park Service and keep drawing millions of people. We are the third...
Fourth in the nation in...
Fourth in the nation in visitors. That's a legitimate figure. We are ahead of...
Yellowstone, Yosemite, Glacier, just to name a few. And in 2021, we were the second, the 63 National Parks.
We dropped to the third. But the MOU provides the parameters of how this is all going to work, and then, this one last extension for 13 months of the lease will give us time to work with the National Park Service to bring back to you a longer-term relationship and commitment, which is in the best interest of everybody.
And Scott, you've had a chance, I know we were talking about this before the meeting, and you've had a chance to review both of these, and you don't see, I know this is a complicated situation. You don't see any particular issues with either of these?
No, I think this is actually good steps of going in the right direction to get us set up, to get into a long-term lease and to formalize the relationship between the National Park and the Tourism Bureau and that building specifically. So, I think everyone has been working hard for years to be able to get to this point. So, I think it's all very good.
So, we, so what are we approving here? The MOU?
MOU and a 13-month lease.
A 13-month lease agreement.
Do we need to do two separate motions?
Well, if we can do both, if we want to talk a little bit about the lease, a little bit more about the lease.
Talk about the lease.
Okay.
So, it's a pretty simple lease in the sense that they will pay a monthly fee. We have negotiated what that monthly fee will, and that includes, so they pay, right now, 20% of the going rate. So, they pay on 6,000 square feet. The reason they're only paying 20% is because we used 80% of the funds, were federal funds, when we built the building. In addition to that, they do pay 50% of the operational expenses, and then, they give us a monthly fee for cap, long-term capital improvement fees. So, all of that is wrapped up in one actual payment that we get for the month that I'm trying to see with you.
And the lease becomes a one-page sheet. If that, if everything else was in there, it would be a 15-page document.
So, what we did for the extension three years ago, we put in a cost of living of 7%. So, for the extension, we did another 7% for this rate. So, you're seeing the rate in the lease will be $103,989.27, and that's broken out on a per-month basis that is deposited into our account.
That's a pretty good deal, since you're putting the butts in the seats in the county, you know, as far as tourism. That's a pretty good deal.
Well, entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Indiana Dunes National Park, Porter County Board of Commissioners, and the Porter County Convention Recreation and Visitors Commission, as well as the National Park Lease Agreement.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Great, thank you, guys.
Number four on your list, Laurel, I and I don't have a clue what that's about.
We know.
You know, okay, good.
Well, I do have a clue, but I'll let the National Park deal with that.
I didn't have a clue.
Yeah, that's true.
Good night, thank you.
You're welcome. We've been asked, we were contacted by the DNR, asked to approve an authorization of the National Park Service Regulations on County Lands Within the Boundaries of Indiana Dunes National Park. What are we approving there, exactly? I mean...
They actually sent over something for us to sign. It was a, I believe it was an MOU.
Okay.
And basically, there's, the park is irregularly shaped, and within it, there are portions of parcels that are county-owned land. For instance, at the campground, there's a couple of parcels in there that are technically in county property that aren't within the park proper. So, you get into a jurisdictional question of who has the right to arrest or not arrest. This only allows the DNR or the National Park Service to enforce the regulations within, in and around the park on county-owned property. We're not, we're not affecting cities or towns that might be in the area. That would be their own agreement to enter into.
And we actually sent this over to Sheriff Ballen to look at, and he had no issues with it as well. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Expo event. Scott, will you start us out here?
Yeah, so on the expo event discussion, I just, I think the last meeting, we were on the precipice of being able to explain that, on the issue directly of the Halloween Bazaar, if I'm using the right terminology, and the accompanying drag show, we had heard the concerns, the commissioners had heard the concerns from both sides, and I had had a conversation with our director of the Expo Center and also the individuals putting on the event. And I think, at this point, we're just trying to clarify some facts that had happened. This event had been going on, I believe this was the fourth year. This would have been the fourth year. There was a lot more attention on it, and it was also advertised slightly different. And it was, depending on, you know, the way you were reading it, could have good or bad implications. And so, we talked to the actual individuals that were doing the event, and what we had worked out was that they were going to obviously continue with the event. We were going to enhance our way of monitoring the alcohol consumption by the utilization of some risk bands that are pretty common at other events in and around this area. So, just so we have a good idea, who is allowed to and who isn't allowed to be having a drink, and I think we had talked about potentially, when we look at, looking at the policy as a whole on our venue rental, that that may be something we do. It was just an overabundance of caution as to having alcohol around children. And last but not least, or not, there's three, two more things. One, 18 and over was going to be allowed to enter the building, obviously, as an adult. 17 and younger, because of the combination of alcohol in the event, were going to be required to have an adulterer, a guardian available. And then, there was going to be a little bit of rewording of the, on the advertising part as far as who was free and who wasn't free. And we had come to that agreement, and I believe it was in close time to the last commissioners' meeting. There was still a potential meeting with the event organizers coming up a couple days after that. And so, we just hadn't quite got to the ability to be able to spew it out at the public meeting. So, as it stood before the event was canceled by the event organizers, that was going to be the plan. The, the event was going to allow to be continued. It was going to be 18 and over were entering. 17 and younger were going to need a parent or a guardian, and we were going, and they were going to slightly modify the advertising. And we were, in of ourselves, we were going to implement the risk bands on the alcohol and also consider that moving forward. So, that's where we were, and that's what we were working on behind the scenes, obviously balancing some significant legal issues. I can tell you that I had more than one group conversation with attorneys on attempting to reconcile all the different rights that we have playing together here. I mean, we obviously have free speech. We have some parental rights. We have some laws that we need to follow, obviously, with our own alcohol. We don't make up our own alcohol rules. The state of Indiana tells us the laws that relates to alcohol, and we follow those. That's why we're licensed through the state. And so, that's what brought us here today. So, any questions or anything that I had forgotten?
No, this is a, this is a work in progress.
Well, and then, overall, this brought to the light that we probably need to take a real good look in calm times at our event, our venue policies that relates to these things and alcohol around children and things of those nature. I think we all had some learning experiences about the type of events that are happening that do have alcohol and kids together. This wasn't the only one by any stretch of the imagination, so. And look at those things, because ultimately, I think this board needs to give our, would be a help to our, the directors of these individual facilities, like them, you know, whether it's the MOH or whether it's the expo, of being, having something to help them when they're dealing with the rentals and the issues that come up. But I think we're going to be scheduling some meetings to talk about that policy. And when we are at that stage, we're obviously going to have a, at a commissioners' meeting, and we will have more public comment as to what that policy would be. So, tonight, we're not diving into what all those things, it's complicated. It's, it's not as straightforward and as easy as it would first seem. And so, I would say stay tuned for that more comprehensive venue policy after everyone's had an opportunity to weigh in. And, and then, obviously, the hardest part, frankly, on these types of issues is the legal review to make sure that we're balancing everyone's rights accordingly and appropriately. So, I would think that would be coming down the road here over the next several weeks or months until we can get that on the books.
And we actually do have our first meeting scheduled, so that will be happening soon.
All right, we'll move on. Sheriff's Residence Discussion.
I ask that this be put on the agenda just to give a fuller explanation. At our last meeting, we voted to hire two certified appraisers to do a fair-market lease appraisal of the sheriff's residence. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the sheriff's residence, it's the old Pocomuse location. It's on the corner of Franklin and Indiana, right? Did I get that right? And that building is a gorgeous old building. If you've never been in it, it has nine beautiful rooms. I believe it was probably considered a mansion in its time. And it shut down, the museum shut down about three years ago due to the pandemic, and it never reopened. And then, in May of last year, it actually moved out to a possibly better location across the street because they have an opportunity for better climate control and better temperature control in that location. And as a consequence, it really has not even been open to the public for three years, and I felt that it was such a shame for it to sit vacant and not get utilized. Now, that building does need work, there is no doubt about it, but I think it's well worth restoring it. Now, in discussing with our attorney, Scott McClure, because it is a government-owned building, there are some very strict stipulations as to what we need to do. And I'm just wondering if you could just recap exactly what we must do. We can't just do whatever we want in this case. There are some very specific...
The process starts with two appraisals from certified appraisers looking for the fair-market rent right now. And then, once those numbers come in, then we have to have several different choices as to whether it's a closed bid or, or some different options. But at the end of the day, we put together what, based upon what those appraisals come back at. We have very little leeway within the statute to change or modify those numbers. If I remember off the top of my head, I believe it was something, maybe 10% was the leeway we have. And then, we run into some other stipulations. If there's, that rent were to be $25,000 or more per year, then it takes council approval. If the lease is three years or longer than three years, it takes council approval. But ultimately, when we get the appraisals back and put together a package, then anyone in the public who would want to potentially rent it would have the ability to submit a bid based upon the appraisal and the parameters that we're allowed to negotiate on. And then, we're back to that familiar standard of the, you know, highest and most responsive bid as it relates to the rent would be able to start negotiating on a lease. But I think, right now, we have our appraisers engaged. We're waiting for those to come back. Once those come back, then we would go through the bid process to see who and what it would look like if someone wanted to rent it out based upon those appraisals. Those would come back, and then, we would start lease negotiation. Depending on the terms, tells us which way down the tree we go, whether it's back to council or stays here with the commissioners.
Thank you, Scott.
What everybody should, should, should keep in mind is that, you know, as Barb Commissioner Riggs pointed out, that building for the last three years has sat vacant. We have never, since that building has been built, have never collected any kind of rent on it. The sheriff's department moved out of there in the early 70s to move into the, on the Franklin site, which is now the old, the old New Jail. Now, they're, so, you know, 25,000 may not seem like a year to a lot, to a lot of people. As a matter of fact, we, I think we heard some, some grumblings about that from a couple of members of the council. But just keep this in mind, we haven't collected, we're not collecting any rent from it right now. And the electric bill alone, for that three period of time, has ran over $30,000, just in the electric bill. So, you know, getting some money back out of it, plus getting a, somebody to lease it with the, with the understanding that they're going to go in and make some, some improvements to the interior of the building, I, I just think that's a win-win for the taxpayers.
Thank you.
All righty. Facilities, Daniel Sullivan, Director. We had an RFP requirement for architectural design professionals to, to support the facilities director in expanding the Health Department's main office at the admin building. Many, as we've talked about here several times this year so far, that we're going to, we're going to take on pretty much a major renovation of the area, the space that the Health Department currently occupies in the basement.
Yeah, I would see that as number one, is we're expanding because the Health Department needs to, has grown and needs to expand with the county. So, number one is outgrowing its space and moving to contiguous spaces. I would also see it as an opportunity to sort of do a first finished renovation of this 32-year-old building, the first chance to sort of get a professional opinion on how we ought to look for the next, the next phase of its life. We won't be doing much beyond the first floor, but the first floor should get an update on its, its look as well, the washrooms nearby and that sort of thing. Some security updates that I think are a good idea, and just talking to the staff down there about what they need as a step one, and how we can best improve circulation, workflow, and that sort of thing.
Scott, have you taken a look at this?
Yeah, I see Porter County's Facilities Department seeking proposals for qualified firms for architectural design bidding management with an alternative for construction management. Lays out the design phase and what we're looking for on scope, budget, and schedule. Scope goes on to include certain things, and I think Daniel's just gone through most of them and then the bidding portion of it. So, this is, we're looking for people, we're looking for the qualified firms that fit into that architectural design and bidding management or construction management, or a combination of the both to give us their proposals, their request for proposals on, on what it would cost to do that so that the commissioners can take it up and look at it and make a decision. I believe what Daniel's asking for is this to be approved at today's meeting. And then, the question would be is, the commissioners would need to approve that and then also give a date of which, when you would like those back or when they're due.
Is, we looking at a 30-day window?
Well, yeah, I would think 30 is a little bit on the low end, you know. It's hard to turn things around in 30 days in those type of businesses at times. So, I think maybe 30 to 45, 60 is a little too long. I don't think it takes that long, but if you're wanting the best response, I think it's a minimum of 30 days to get that response back.
What do we want to do here?
Why don't we do 45 days? Okay, I move that we approve the RFP as written with a deadline of 45, 45 days for responses.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
And we have an RFP for repairs to the, to the garage?
Yes, so at a previous discussion, the question of some conditions, failing conditions of the garage came up, and the commissioners asked me to look into getting a professional evaluation of that. So, we did get a proposal for that evaluation, and I think that's kind of on the table right now. But as a second to that, as to deciding whether or not to go for that right now, we also want to look and see if, what, what it would cost just to replace the, do the basics, basically, replace the seals, the transition points between sections of the garage, which is its major failure point at this point, again, at 32 years. That'll give us an idea, is this the time to do that full 10-year outlook evaluation? Or do we just go ahead and spend some, spend the money we know we need to do right now, which is replace those, those transition seals between the control points and, between the buildings, between the garage and the admin building?
So, we, did we have a structural engineer look at this?
Not yet. We, that's what the proposal would be. So, the RFP is to have them come out, a little over $8,000.
And pretty much what they find is pretty much how we're going to.
Well, what I'm recommending is that we get an estimate just to do the repairs to the joint... the joints. And then we can bring that back into our meeting and decide if we want to use the, and that was structure point, right?
Structure point is the one that reached out to, and they gave us the proposal.
They gave us a proposal, and, and that's just to do the 10-year, you know, the evaluation of, of looking out 10 years, or if we just want to fix it. So I think today, I would like to recommend that we approve getting the estimate just to do the fixes, and then we can decide which route we want to take.
I'd be a little more comfortable if we had maybe a couple of more firms having the opportunity to look at that, not just structure point. They're a great firm, it's just that they're a very big firm, right? And this is not a big job. And so I can imagine, I don't want to pretend to think that I know what they'll, what they'll, you know, toss it out at, but it would be cheap.
I think the, the evaluation is, is what you're talking about, getting more firms for that? Yes. And it's worth comparing it to, is this, is this the right time to do it? You know, or do we just replace what we know we need to replace?
Well, it's 30, it's 30-plus years old. I want to, I want to be able to say that I know it's safe. We know it needs work. I want to know that it's structurally safe. You know, the park on, the walk on, the walk under, and then we, then we can go from there as far as what needs, you know.
So you think we ought to go for more proposals for the evaluation itself?
I would.
Okay.
And Commissioner Biggs, I would also still like for us to at least get an estimate of what it would, what it would be just to fix it, just so we have a basis of comparison.
They could, they could do that. They could do, they, they would do that anyway, but we can make that part of the RFQ.
Sure.
So...
All right, so to be clear, I think what you're asking Daniel to do is to do a request for proposals for someone to evaluate the garage and what it, what might ail it, correct?
Structurally, yes.
Structurally. And then I think also been requested to go out and get some quotes on the known features right now that you believe need to be fixed. Then the commissioners can look at both and make a decision.
Yes, yes. Do we need to make a motion for that?
No.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Development and Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson. Bob's on vacation. We have a Lockmiller Group in agreement for construction engineering services for the Calumet Trail Phase One and Two Mineral Springs Road to the Doom Park Train Station in the amount of $263,380. Scott, can you add a little bit to this?
This is for construction inspection services by Lockmiller. So this is for the, for phases one and two from Mineral Springs to Doom Park Train Station in a contract amount of $263,380. This is for that, that, those construction inspection services that are part of the situation when we're dealing with federal funds and matching to make sure that things are being constructed the way they're supposed to be being constructed.
And this is certainly something we saw coming eventually, coming to us.
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve, or whatever you'd like.
I move that we approve the agreement for construction engineering services for the Calumet Trail Phases One and Two.
Second. All those in favor say aye or aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Well, that will conclude our regular meeting agenda, but we do have any other matter which may, any, any in the audience would like to speak to or come up, yeah, we'll get you two. Come forward and give your name and where you live. You don't, ma'am, you don't have to give your home address, just the town or city.
Oh, okay. Okay. My name is Fran Fuller. I am from Valparaiso. This, what I have to say is on a very sore subject. I will just preference with what I'm about to say on that.
We have a whole list of them, so.
Okay. Well, I just want to say I do appreciate all the changes that you wanted to make to the drag show at the Expo Center. I do agree there needs to be some limitations on who's exposed to certain things and who is around the alcohol. I totally agree with that. The main reason I'm here is I just feel like there's some education that needs to be done. So I have some statistics here, and these were gotten from the Indiana Center for Prevention of Youth Abuse and Suicide. I have the, the site here if anybody would like it. So just some of the statistics. These were worked on in, excuse me, evidence-based programming. More than 90% of abusers are people, are children, know, love, and trust. Offenders are 80 to 90% male, 10 to 20% female, and 40% are adolescents themselves. Social media is 80% of where sex crimes start. It's not with the drag shows. Targets are children with low self-esteem, obedient, compliant personalities, mental disability, parents that are uninvolved and/or preoccupied, red flags for groomers, gifts, special privileges for no apparent reason, overly affectionate, gaining trust and access, playing a role in the child's life, controlling, isolating, and secrecy. They tend to be youth-serving professionals, acquaintances, and influential members of the community. The red flags and then tending to be youth-serving professionals, I got that from victimofcrimes.org. Again, I have all these sites where I obtain this information. The next part of this was from The Baptist News Global on September 14th of 2022. There is, there is an epidemic of predatory pastors. That is not to say that drag queens are not a threat to gender norms, that subordinate women, and that subordinate women enfilify the LGBTQIA+ people. And that is what the right is really afraid of. That drag might cause people to rethink gender and sexuality, that they might further lose their grip on power over straight white women and general and sexual minorities. Again, it's a quote from The Baptist News Global. Not particularly my opinions. Again, I just wanted to, I did the research, and I want there to be some education out there. From AP News, drag show story errors have been deemed dangerous, not because of the drag queens, but because of the right-wing attacks. The anti-LGBTQIA+ rhetoric has to be stopped. Using fears about gender and sexuality to enlist new followers is merely to distract from one's own current scandals. Again, a quote from the AP News. And so this is my part of it. So for me, in reality, all of this is because people are afraid of the LGBTQIA+ community. There is no fear to be had. They don't want to push their beliefs, their lifestyles on anyone, least of all children. I know firsthand what it's like to see someone you love struggle with that, to watch them beat themselves up because they have different beliefs than most, to feel vilified, vilified by so-called friends, to be judged by strangers every day of their lives. Every day she has to deal with it. And I, as her mother, have to sit by and watch because she tells me it happens every day. You'd be battling for me every day, Mom. Everyone needs to educate themselves on gender and sexuality. Please just do the education and do the research. They don't choose these lives for themselves. I don't know how many times I heard her say, why would I choose this? Why would I choose a harder path in life when life is hard enough? So just please do the research. Our God created them this way, just like He created all the heterosexuals. And as Lady Gaga says, baby, I was born this way. You are appointed to these positions. You are voted into these positions by the people, and you're supposed to be for the people. So please don't be afraid of what this is, and do the work and try to understand it. In closing, we're just talking about a drag show, disputing a drag show at a venue in the middle of nowhere. And I know it hasn't been canceled by you, but the production company canceled it because of all the threats that they received, because of all the hubbub about it. Excuse me?
Can you ask them to be quiet so they can hear your statement?
Yes, please. Can I have the respect for you to be quiet? Thank you. Parents have the right to take their...
Ma'am, hang on just a second.
Okay.
Let's all respect each other while we're in here, okay?
Thank you.
So let's, I'm not going to let this get out of hand. I don't want anybody either side yelling something out, or I'm going to close it and I'm going to go home. I don't want to be part of something like that. So let's, let, they can speak and then you can speak if you'd like to.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Biggs. I appreciate it. Where nobody has to be exposed to it, where parents have the right to take their children or not. So to me, this is, would be like banning books. There are so many colors in the world that we need to expose our children to, to learn, to teach, to enlighten them, to just make them better people and allow them to have the opportunity to make up their own minds about how they feel about life and not push your rhetoric on them. I don't expect everybody to think like I do, but, and, but I, and I'm not trying to push my beliefs on anyone, but please don't try to push your beliefs on me or my family. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
State your name and what, where you live. You don't have to give, you don't have to give the home address.
Kathy Watson, Valparaiso. Okay?
Yeah.
So today in Nashville, Tennessee, at least three children and three adults were gunned down. And this month, Tennessee became the first state to sharply restrict drag shows by banning the performances on public property and in places where they could be watched by minors. Seems to me Tennessee isn't doing a very good job of taking care of their children today. And yet, in Porter County, Indiana, today, we're listening to people discussing whether or not we should bring a drag show to Valparaiso and allow kids to attend rather than tighter gun laws and protecting our children in school. We live in a crazy country. Drag has been around as long as Shakespeare, Shakespeare has been performed. This is an art form. This art form has cast a false light in recently by right-wing activists and politicians who complain about the sexualization or grooming of children. Opponents often coordinate protests at drag events, sometimes showing up with guns, screaming and yelling obscenities, and threatening venues, queens, and patrons. I will challenge that the opponents of drag do more damage than any drag performance could. But don't take my word for it. I decided to do some research, something that obviously the opponents of rogue syndicate have not done. I looked up the number of known drag queens in 2023 that have been arrested for pedophilia. After searching for several hours and using many sources, you know what I found? Zero. What I did find was a number of stories of drag queens being beaten, threatened, or killed at the hands of right-wing extremists. In one week here in the United States, 17 people were arrested for child pornography or pedophilia. 14 of them were pastors or youth pastors at Christian churches. That is one random week in 2023. But guess what? So far in 2023, no arrests have been made for drag queens. But in one week, 14 pastors or youth pastors have been arrested. It would be an abomination if I told you not to send your children to church. I'll leave that decision for you to make. But step aside, sit down, and allow others to raise their children as they see fit. You see, this is America, and you don't get to control what others do. Let's be respectful of each other. And if you don't like drag, don't go. But I can assure you, you are missing out on a great talent and a fun evening. And quite honestly, in the most recent movie of Elvis, I thought, saw a lot more pelvic thrusting than I have ever seen at a children's drag show.
Does anybody else like to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. I saw you early.
I know.
You cut in line.
Yeah, she's pushy. Oh, shoot. I, I had put something together that talked about the alcohol and that sort of thing. And I appreciate all the things that you talked about tonight in terms of, of stuff that you've done. But the fact of the matter is that Rogue Syndicate folks canceled because of threats to not just them via phone and email, but also to the people at Porter County Expo Center. A couple of weeks ago, this body was presented with the opinions of some voters regarding the halfway to Halloween event organized and promoted by Rogue Syndicate and hosted at the Porter County Expo Center. The concern among those who spoke was the drag show and the idea that children would be permitted, excuse me, and that it posed an unsafe environment for those children. I believe one woman equated it to grooming, and people have talked about that today. Since then, an article has appeared in the Chicago Tribune, which included statements from all three commissioners. Commissioner Biggs referred to the show as an adult-themed show, which would, I imagine, then, that Mrs. Doubtfire, Tootsie, some like it hot, and perhaps even the nutty professor should be reviewed for adult writing. But I know that's, that's not your job.
Well, that's, since you brought my name up, I'm going to, I'm going to respond.
Okay.
Okay, those are not my words. This is what we were told by the director. There's another commissioner here that was told the same thing, that it was adult-themed with a PG rating. I don't know how you get a PG rating with an adult theme. It's not my words, ma'am.
In terms of the alcohol, the venue where children would be presented, I doubt that this is the issue really, in terms of those folks who canceled the event and all of the research that the county attorney did, since a number of the events always have alcohol at them. Excuse me, not always, often have, including Three Little Birds Market, which is Friday, April 28th, Saturday, April 29th. You're, I'm glad to be able to promote that for you. Food and drinks will be there, and children under five for $5 unless, or, um, children 12 and under are free. I'm sorry. Entrance is $5. And part of a group that, let's face it, it's on Facebook. It's a private group, but the women shared lots of comments about the article that was posted today. One woman suggested, I want to share those with you. Alcohol in the presence of children. Well, when you don't understand how your event venue works, I suppose you need to stop everything to figure it out. And it sounds like you have. I wonder if those opposed considered reaching out to the ATC, maybe get the exiles officer up here for consultation. It's not hard to get your questions answered if you know who to ask. It's government. There's a phone tree. I don't know about that, but you guys probably do. In fairness, in the article, you did admit to getting, needing to get a better handle on how the venue operates. So grace is given. One person said, I recently attended a bridal expo at the Expo Center, and there was alcohol being served along with kids running around. It's not about the alcohol. I also attended the Christmas festival downtown. There was wine tasting, hot ciders available with no complaints, and lots of children around. It's not about the alcohol. If you don't want your kids going to a drag show, as Kathy Watts said, don't take them. It's that simple. Another woman questioned, I'd like to know how they reason the well-being of children as a concern for this event against, oh, this is bad. You ready?
I'm ready.
This is bad.
I, I bet you I heard worse. Go ahead.
Okay. Well-being of children as a concern for this event against appointing the most recent health board member who has a documented history of fraud allegations, removal of her insurance, this is from an attorney that wrote this, and endangerment allegations, Flannery versus Jepson, and who openly and confidently stated chiropractors are a better fit than medical doctors to make decisions about our children's health at a school board meeting. And then there's this.
So what does that have to do with the, the event that we're speaking about?
I'm just sharing comments.
Just shooting it out.
I'm just sharing comments with you from these ladies.
Take a good shot.
Who are concerned about it.
Go ahead.
And then there's this, I haven't attended the popcorn festival in several years, but I'm guessing folks can still walk around with alcohol. Also, what is the big event at the pavilion in the early summer? I know you have to buy tickets, but I don't remember. It's lots of beer. I live downtown. Kids are all over where adults are imbibing in the open, opening. I hope you did say this. In the article, it says, I don't believe I was put in this office to support these types of events.
Why I said that?
Okay, he went on to say they got the wrong commissioner in the wrong county.
Said wrong commissioner, wrong county.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, well, the Republicans had a get-out-the-vote family picnic, also has a bar. You didn't hear that from me.
Well, it wasn't an adult theme, ma'am.
The county should provide secure-
It wasn't government property, ma'am.
Okay.
That's what I get.
There was still alcohol there.
That's what I get, it seems to be lost with some people. I, we get paid up here to look after the best interests of the, of these properties. We, we, we've been, we were contacted by an event sponsor saying that we want to have an adult-themed event with this guy.
Did it say adult-themed or did that happen later?
They talked to our director and that's what the director told these two commissioners today.
Mm-hmm.
And it was gonna be, it was, it was thirteen and under, that's what was advertised, thirteen and under, and free. And there was no mention about adult supervision. And, and, and then the sale of alcohol. Now you gotta remember, this isn't a wedding reception. This is open to the general public.
Uh-huh.
So we don't know who's coming in there.
Except there is a drag show that's gonna be happening here.
Can you, can you imagine, can you, can you ju, imagine how much our liability jumps?
When there's a drag show?
When there, when there's a, don't, let me, don't put words in my mouth, let me finish. I wish respectfully to let you finish.
All right.
When we have an event out there that we open to the public, that we sanctioned, that says thirteen and under are free, bring them, come on in, no mention of adults, and we're serving alcohol too, imagine how the liability jumps on us? This wasn't an issue about a drag show, not, not with this board. It was not an issue with the drag show.
It was a dr, issue with the drag show about the threats.
Let me finish. I've set on this board long enough to approve three of those before this fourth one come in front of me. You didn't hear me say anything then, did you? And the reason why-
Did you have complaints, ma'am?
Huh?
Did you have complaints, people showing up and-
And there's the difference, is that when it was pointed out to us, and that's when I, I spoke to Lori. Okay, what's going on here? It's, it's another drag show, so what? What's, why, why is this one getting any attention? And it was about the way that they were advertising it. And you've heard, you heard Attorney McClure state that this one, this one was a little different because of the way it came out advertised. There's no boogeyman up here, okay? If you're looking one, looking for one, you're looking at the-
I wasn't, I wasn't looking for one, I'm just sharing comments.
Okay, I'm just saying you're looking in the wrong direction. There's one thing that I'm going to do, and I said it in that article. I'm going to respect people's constitutional rights. But I'm not going to do it if it, if it, if it means putting juveniles in, in this county in, at risk from a liability standpoint. That I'm not gonna do, okay?
Got it.
Thank you.
I'm not done.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Final comment in support of the Porter County Expo Center before Lori, uh, this is again a comment from one of the women in this group. Before Lori Polowski Daly, Daly, uh, that facility was falling down, not just falling apart, falling down. She practically reinvented what it meant to have an Expo Center, froze for months in a trailer during the renovation, and now manages one of the biggest state-of-the-art revenue-driving venues in Porter County. She clearly knows what she's doing and break checking her like this is so unprofessional and just wrong. Department heads are in those positions for a reason, reason. These two need to let them do their jobs and not micromanage everything they don't like or understand. In closing, now this is me talking.
All right.
In closing, uh, I attended a drag show hosted at the Memorial Opera House with my friend Kurt, he was there, my husband was there. Security was provided for three protesters that showed up. That, I believe those were Valparaiso police officers. There was nothing there other than fun, spirited entertainment, costumes, laughter, and singing. It was lighthearted and I'm fairly confident, the only thing any kids would have been exposed to was just that, entertainment and beautiful people living their best lives. And so explain to me, from those folks in the back, what's so awful about that?
Well, let me, let me-
Should I start?
Let me just say this, uh, again, since you, since you brought it up. Lori has done a good job out there, okay? But Lori didn't build that out there. The taxpayers of Porter County built that out there. The commissioners didn't build that out there. The taxpayers of Porter County built that out there. And they're gonna have a say in how we're gonna use that out there. And whether I don't like it, you don't like it, it doesn't matter. They're gonna have-
They don't like it?
And if, whether, or they don't like it, you're absolutely right. They're, that, and you just heard me say, we're, we cannot and we will not violate people's constitutional rights. If that's, we're gonna be in the rental business, we're in the rental business. You can't, it's, you can't be just a little bit in the rental business, we're in it. So, but at the same time, we're gonna, we're gonna try to do it in a way that, that, you know, that doesn't leave us at, at a liability disadvantage, that it does, that it does also send the right message that, you know, we're not, we're not gonna run an adult, uh, whatever out there. If, if we wanna have, if we wanna have events out there such as drag shows, we do it in a way that we send a message that it's done responsibly. That's all I'm asking to do. I don't care that there's a drag show out there. I really, really don't.
That's good to hear.
But let's do it in a way, or set the example for the rest of the country how it's done without upsetting everybody else. And I think there's a way to do that. I think there's a medium in the road that everybody can meet in if we respect one another. But we got to make up our minds whether or not we're gonna do that. Okay?
Ma'am, ma'am. Oh, what is your name? I'm sorry.
Uh, Kathy DeWitt.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else? I said, go ahead, come on up here. You're next, okay?
Sorry, I wasn't prepared to come up and speak today, but since, you know, Kathy Watts graced us with her presence, let's go ahead and bring up the fact that I was personally attacked by the nasty women's-
Don, Don, Don.
Okay, I apologize, I will address you guys.
Okay, thank you.
I was personally attacked by the nasty women's group. They made a fake, uh, Facebook account and they put my name and my face saying, oh, let me get this, 'cause I want to be exact, that I had a problem with disability people. This was posted on Facebook. I have been on Facebook in over a year. So we had on Valparaiso Now, Laura Miller, let's see, this was a disability awareness spotlight. We don't need disability awareness in awareness, the city runs just fine without accommodating these people. There's more of that. I'm not going to go through all of the other awful things that these people were saying, but the whole point of me coming up and saying anything is they're on the attack. Not one time have I threatened anybody, not one time have I felt that it, it's my place to do something like that. I feel that we should be protecting our children. I have been to drag queen shows before, I know what they're geared towards. And as a matter of fact, I got a gentleman right here that actually says, why would you bring your children to our shows? This is a drag queen right here, and he's telling you, why would you bring your children to our shows?
Don.
These are, these are disgusting, and they, this is from his mouth, not mine. So I'm being personally attacked by these people, the nasty women's group, and particularly Kathy Watts called Patrick Lipp. I don't know what the point of that was. Um, I mean, I, I, I already made the police report regarding someone making the fake, um, Facebook account.
Don.
They're tracking down the IP address.
I understand, I understand there. Look, but we're not here to, to officiate an issue between you and Ms., uh, the lady Watts.
Watts.
We're not here to officiate that. Do you have something that addresses directly this?
Yes, I do.
I, I, I see, I see, I see that you're upset. I'm not trying to put you off, I just, you know, we, we can be here till midnight, you know? So let's, let's, let's try to keep it on point.
Okay, I'm gonna try to keep it on point. If they've had these drag queen shows for the past few, four years, kinda doesn't, um, add up timeline-wise considering wasn't everything shut down for the coronavirus. It's just one little point I'd like to make. Um, and at these other drag queen shows, were there children there? Is it, is, was that something that was acceptable then? And we may not agree, like you have said, it is a constitutional right for them to have the shows. Fine, leave the kids out of it. That's all I ask. And that's all a lot of people ask. Not one time have I ever threatened anybody, not one time have I called people names, but they don't have a problem calling me a bigot, a Bible thumper, this and that, because of my beliefs. I'm not pushing my beliefs on them, just like they're saying they're not pushing them on me. But the, in fact, they are pushing them on us. That's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am. State your name and the community you live in.
Hi, I'm Kelly Garza, I live in Valparaiso. I just wanted to come up, especially about the adult content and kinda clear up maybe a little bit, since I have attended this bizarre every single year it's put on. I've been at the drag show. I have seen that, yes, there are children there and it's twelve and up, but there is not adult content. The reason why it is twelve and up has more to do with the comedy at the show, because in between the performances, there will be an MC who keeps the crowd entertained with jokes and not with the dancing or costumes. Last year was the biggest show because more and more people keep coming out to them, and the biggest crowd pleaser song was Monster Mash with a fully dressed Bride of Frankenstein.
Love that song.
It's a great song, and it is not adult content. I am sorry that you were misinformed and led to believe that there was adult content there, and I would really urge everyone to actually see what is going on in our community shows with our community performers and what they are putting out there, because it's not adult, it is absolutely appropriate for twelve and up. And that's all I wish, wish to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm not gonna let anybody cut in front of you either.
It's hard. You get somebody over here too.
Well, first and foremost, Commissioner Biggs and Commissioner Regnetz, I thank you for your time, as you've heard a lot already. Uh, I'm Rebecca Tomerlin, I live in Valparaiso, Indiana. I have a seven-year-old child. I have lived in this town for a long time, and I fully appreciate that the Valparaiso Community School District allows me an opt-out signature for things I might think are appropriate, inappropriate for my child. The same goes with junior high and high school with the sex education, things like that. We are allowed the opt-out because that is a public education facility. I fully appreciate that. And I think I have a lot in common with the residents that have expressed emotional pleas to use to protect our children. I want my son protected too. But I have a different approach. I want parents to decide what their children are exposed to at school, like with the opt-out policy. I want them to be in charge of what their kids see at home. I regulate my son's iPad, I have parental controls, I make sure he does not have any access to things, and that's my right and my choice. Same with events. I won't take him to a certain rated R movie, it's at the movie theater, like, no. I don't even care if it's showing downtown, whether it's at the Memorial Opera House. There are certain things that other people can visit and go to, and that's fine. I won't take my son down to something at the, uh, I love the pavilion, my son did ice skating there, it was great, but there are events there he shouldn't go to. And what, sometimes it's past his bedtime, but again, uh, there are events like at the Christmas place, or the Christmas event, I went there, there were no wristbands. Fine. If we decide, or if you decide, 'cause it's not my choice, though I am a taxpayer, um, I want consistency. So if we're going to require a wristband for one group, we should do it for all. And I also don't like government overreach, but again, this is your rental, it's a public facility, I understand that, but we need to be consistent. And so if we're not going to allow children, or if we need to focus on wristbands, fine, that should be at every event, and I hate to say it, but weddings too.
No, we agree, we agree.
I had a sip of alcohol when I was under twenty-one at a wedding.
I'm shocked.
I know, right? Um, and so, I mean, it happens everywhere, so I kinda wanna know, well, I'm not asking questions, 'cause I know, where do we draw the line?
I just want you to know you're doing really, really well right now.
I'm trying.
Don't go too, too far, I mean, you've been a day so far.
By the way, Rebecca, we are planning to do a venue policy that will be consistent across all of our venues. And then we will not-
But it'll just be our venues?
Yes, well, I, yeah.
We're not the city of Elbow.
No, you're not gonna tell me what movie I should take my kid to.
Well, I'm just saying, there's other municipalities have their own policies, so-
Oh, yeah, this would just be the county, that's different.
That's different, just, just making the point.
So even Rogers Lakewood is a city park, but not Sunset Hill, I understand that.
Correct.
So whatever we do at Sunset Hill, we gotta do at the Expo. I fully understand that.
To make that even more clear, the park board is the park board and they're in charge of their-
The answer to you.
No, the park board does not interest the commissioners. Commissioners appointments to the park board as the council, as the auditor.
Okay.
So really, we're talking about our two venues.
Okay.
The Expo and the Memorial Opera House.
Thank you for clarifying that. Well, actually, that does make a lot of sense since the county parks have something different. I should, yeah.
Correct.
Heck, I was on the park board, you'd think I'd remember that. Anyhow, it's been a few years. Uh, so anyhow, I will, I'm going to back up, I just don't want us to have double standards, and I'm glad you're going to review that, because as we know, weddings can get rowdy too. And if, you know, when we're serving alcohol there, are we going to be concerned about kids under eighteen, or are we going to have separate policies for weddings versus nonprofits versus, you know, an Expo like this? My bigger concern was, I would hate for anyone to wanna cancel this event, and I'm glad to hear it doesn't sound like you want to, because heck, I'm not a huge fan of the gun Expo that they have, but I wouldn't want anyone to cave to how I feel. I think all of us here are vocal minorities on both sides. The majority of people, they're not here. They really, they probably don't care. But again, I'm only here to show that I would love to have consistency and I don't want government to overreach, because next someone's gonna be telling me what my kid can read or not, and I'd rather just have an opt-out. I was a librarian for fifteen years. I can choose what my kid can read or not. It's my choice to let him have a card to check out, same thing, and it kinda, it comes to this, I probably would not take my seven-year-old to a drag show, but that's my choice. And I would hate for anybody to threaten my life, anybody else's life, anyone's safety for any reason in this county.
And we do not believe in the threats either.
Exactly.
Yeah, we got them, we got them too.
Oh, I bet you do.
That's a big secret.
I think a lot of us-
We're getting them all along too.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, I'm very opinionated, so I get them, but whatever. It's neither here nor there. I just wanna thank you for your time and allowing me to even speak about this.
You made a, a great point, and I think that, really, I think, um, where we get in trouble is if we're inconsistent with our rules and our regulations. And I don't think our regulations were, um, they need to be tightened down, so everybody understands the playing field.
Absolutely.
And that's where the, I think that the feeling of disrespect comes in, is when one group feels they're being treated differently than the other group, and I don't, quite honestly, I don't blame them. But so, but that's where we come in, and we're gonna, we're gonna take some time, uh, with Scott's help and we're going to, and with Lori's help, and we're going to, um, you know, re, review every, all of our regulations and, uh, improve where, where, uh, make a good regulation, a better regulation, so.
Wonderful. Well, again, thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You're cutting into my dinner, I just want you to know. Go ahead, I'm-
It's big print, I have a hard time reading.
I'm just kidding, I'm, yeah, well, take your time.
Thanks for allowing me to speak, I gotta change the subject here.
Start with your name, start with your name.
My name is Scott Lunt, Morgan Township.
Okay.
Uh, a lot of the farmers who are in favor of the solar project have made a lot of statements, and I feel that many of them have gone unchallenged, so I would just like to challenge a few of them and then just offer some insights as I think about this whole thing. So one of the farmers who has a lot of land, uh, south of 150, towards Malden, um, she had commented about how she's gonna have farmland around the perimeter of the project, and then all of the solar panels and the inverters would be towards the inside, so it's gonna have a very low visual impact. Not entirely a true statement, in the fall after harvest, in the wintertime, in the spring before things start to grow, it's gonna have a big visual impact. And I think she was trying to make the case that because she is doing this, and it would have a reduced visual impact during part of the year, that that's gonna apply to all the other solar projects in the area, but that's simply not the case. Other solar projects, you have residents who are on higher land, where they look down their, their property and they'll see acres of solar panels. My property, I would be faced with seeing solar panels in front of my house and solar panels right in the backyard. So it's for me, I, there's no way I could escape this. So I wanted to be able to challenge her statement about that. Another comment she had made, and it may just be a small comment, but she commented comment, but she commented that, given the fact the Michigan City Coal Plant is closing, the potential phase out of the Shaver Plant in Wheatfield, we have to have electric. And she's saying, we, meaning the farmers, we need to provide this electric. It's just not the farmers' business of providing electric. It's the utility companies and the government. This is a public utility. It's not a private enterprise to supply electricity to the grid. So, I challenged that point. And the problem is, if the government and the utility takes a power generating plant offline, this is a tremendous amount of base load power that runs 24/7, 365, that's offline. And the solution is to take and put solar panels that have an effect, I mean, on their best day, four hours of electricity, and it's all use it or lose it. It's got to go on the grid. That's not baseline power. Baseline power technically is the amount of power needed at nighttime when no one else is using power. It's the minimum power requirement at any given time during the day. That's the baseline. Everything else is add-on. Assured bond issues. She had made the comment that if the energy technology makes this obsolete, they'll remove the equipment and restore it to the original landscape, and that's the purpose of the bond. Well, the problem with the bond can be many. We have a, a bond that I have not seen any details of it. It's going to be quoted in today's dollars. What happens if we have 30 years of inflation? And it's, say, it's, you know, a million-dollar bond, and 30 years from now, it's $20 million to do it. Is the, is the bond tied to inflation? Is there going to be any sort of mechanism to protect the cost of removing it? Secondly, we're going to be depending on a surety bond company to be solvent during these rough financial waters we're seeing right now. We're seeing bank failures and bailouts. What if surety bond company sees a failure and there's no bailout? Well, then there will be no funds, and then these panels are going to be sitting there. So, I find that to be a risk that is hard for me to accept, because I don't see the assurances there. Private property rights. Farmland is ultimately our private property, and unduly contesting one's right to use your private property as you see fit threatens everybody's rights. That was a statement made at the big February 27th meeting. Well, my, in my view, building a solar farm across the street and behind my house will result in a substantial decline on my property value. Where are my property rights? I didn't buy into this. And in fact, I've had some real estate background. I looked at the zoning. I knew I was purchasing a house in a rural residential area, and I knew that the other land was A1 general agriculture. So, I went to the data that's currently available on the Porter County site, and I looked at the zoning, and I looked at what's permitted, and I look at what you could need a special exception for. There's nothing under general agriculture that says you can put solar in. So, I looked at rural residential. It says something about solar, but you need a special exception. Well, it doesn't say solar specifically, but if you want to deviate from the zoning, you need a special exception. But nothing on solar. I didn't think to try to search the site for solar, and I didn't think of trying to search the site for wind. I looked at the regulations as I saw them being current. I assumed they were current. There's no date on it. I couldn't tell when it was last updated. So, I don't know if that's my bad or, or what, but I based my decision to purchase the property on having a peaceful, tranquil existence, just kind of how it is now, without any extreme change. Another comment about the private property rights is, all Porter County properties regulated. They're zoning on everything. My neighbor wanted to build a garage, and he had to get permission from his neighbors. So, you can't just go out and do anything you want for any reason. There's regulations for, for a reason out there, and it's to protect both sides of, of a change. Finally, my last comment is, if this did happen, I don't even like saying that. If this did happen, I have a concern about what happens after this farmland is converted to a solar farm. This becomes something that is a cash flow property. So, you've got farmland that's used as a farm, but if you cover it with solar panels, it starts producing an income, and the income is protected by subsidy. So, what they have is an enterprise that is something that you can easily sell. So, what I'm saying is, you're, you'd be saying, hey, look, do you want to buy this property? This is what the, the income is. Oh, you know, is, does the income fluctuate? Well, no, not really, because it's all subsidized. So, now, all of a sudden, you have a property that's an, an income enterprise, a cash flow. It's, I liken it to something like Section 8 housing. Do you have a question? I liken it to Section 8 housing.
Right, right.
So, for example, if I was interested-
I find what you're saying interesting. Go ahead.
Sure. If I was interested in buying an apartment building, a four-unit building, and I knew I could get four families in there with Section 8 housing, the government pays me. So, I know that's the most I can make. And then all my expenses are whatever the cost is of the loan on the building and whatever expenses. So, I'm going to try to reduce my expenses, because the gap is what I get to make. And if, and if the farmers decide they're selling their property with these panels, they're going to sell it to someone who says, I'm buying this for one reason only, profit. And if they're buying it for profit, then they're going to minimize their expenses. So, does that mean they're going to keep up the fences and, you know, the weeds and the appearance? Or are they going to say, I'm in this for the money. I'm not doing anything until someone makes me? So, that's a concern I have. Secondly, is if this property gets sold, I understand that some of the farmers are making side deals with some of the residents about, I'll give you extra setback, and this way, you'll stop posting on Facebook, or you'll be okay with this deal, or you'll be quiet, so you don't upset us, and we take the setback back. Thing is, if this isn't some sort of contractual agreement that would transfer to a new owner, say, I'm the new owner of the solar farm, I'm like, what do I have all this unused space around here? Let me check what the solar ordinance is. Oh, I only have to have 100 feet to a property. I'm going to bring all those fences to 100 feet to the property, add more revenue, which means more panels. And now, all of a sudden, it's not what we were sold. It becomes something new. So, these are the concerns I have. I wanted to be able to make a challenge to some of the comments that farmers make, and I thank everybody for your time.
All good points. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
He folks, we went from drag show to solar farm, just like that. Just like that. I'm talented. Anybody else like to speak? Well, thank you very nice, very much, and thank you for-
Wait, wait, wait.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Just a pickup.
Oh, wait, wait.
Hi.
How you doing?
I'm all right. Elena Shook, from Morgan Township, Indiana, 316 South, 150 East. Just a few other things. According to these, these landowners who want to lease out their property, well, according to NextEra, actually, we're supposed to get a lot of jobs. We're supposed to get a lot of jobs through this. Well, I just found a requirement for a job, a lot of union jobs, I should say. I think he said that, Matt Johnson, at the big meeting. Well, I just downloaded this from LinkedIn. This is for a PV solar field technician in Wheatfield, Indiana, for NextEra Energy Services in Wheatfield. And looking through this whole thing, I come to the required qualifications, which are, high school grad, GED experience, two-plus years with, having a valid driver's license, non-DCL, preferred qualifications, associate's or equivalent experience in Six Sigma Yellow Belt Certified, which I looked up and found that's an accreditation as for the profession. So, I don't see any union. I mean, maybe they're talking about the people who are going to do the installation?
Yeah, they were talking about-
Okay.
-the people who are doing the installation.
Did they say that they would be local people?
No.
See, because I think that matters. I mean, are we going to, are we going to have people in from other states?
I'm sure someone would be local, but there, there's, there's no way that all of them could be local.
So, that, I find that kind of concerning. Also, they've said promises to the school. Well, some of the landowners have made Morgan Township School seem like it's just dust a tootin' on its last leg. It's really a great school. It ranks so high in academic standing consistently with 90% graduation rate. No, we don't have a football. We don't have a football team. We can't. We don't have a pool. But we seem to be getting this job done, the academics part, done. Would more money be nice? Yes, it would. But we know how these things work. You know, they make it sound like it's going to go straight to Morgan. Well, it isn't. It's going to East Porter County, and then it's going to trickle in. So, I don't know. It's just, it's, it doesn't seem that great. Also, the Heartland Sunshine Center, it's very nice if you are going to be somebody who uses it as a mother of a disabled son. I mean, yeah, it might have been great when, when he was young. But I don't know that it's going to make up all these things. I don't know that they're going to make up for our loss of property value, environmental, all those things that we keep bringing up. And frankly, we're just, we're just getting our feet wet. Farmers have had, they'd say, two, three years to look into this and, and examine all these possibilities. I found out a month ago today that I may be surrounded on four sides. My property value will be nil if, you know, I mean, it's just going to take such a hit. So, we feel very blindsided by the whole thing. We, our family has responsibility to protect the future as well. So, I mean, that's just, it's just a huge, there's so many unanswered questions, like what Scott was saying. Are we 100 feet away? Are we 200 feet away? Are these individual contractual agreements? The landowner in my case, they never said anything. I, frankly, I believe they would have waited until the NextEra trucks came in and, and just installed. There was no, no conversation at all about this. So, while it's nice that the farmers had all this time to make their decision, I think we need more time as well.
Keep the faith.
I'm nervous. Really, really nervous. But anyway, thank you for listening. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anything else? Yes, Jim?
Hi, I'm Jerry Eagle, living here in Valparaiso. On the solar panel, I just want one thing to add for the zoning considerations in the future. Obviously, we're being bombarded with this stuff, because I think they're all working on this short timeline of two years that since the Biden administration lifted the sanctions against China and the investigation to how these things are built. And so, they got two years to get as many of these things installed as quickly as possible. So, but there's been cases now up in Wisconsin where these things have been put in, you know, 10, 20 years ago, and now they're obsolete. You know, so we're, there's no really good sound sunset clause in these, in these contracts as to what to do with these things when they're, they don't produce. You know, they say, oh, we'll just recycle them. It's going to be all, but there's no, that's all fluff. There's no sound contractual organization that's going to be going out there recycling these things. And so, what's going to be left up in Wisconsin, they start removing these panels, but they lift, they leave all the concrete and, and supports that held them up on these lands, and the owners are stuck. They have nobody to sue to remove this stuff. So, it's, it's going to be costly, you know, you know, I know that maybe they took four years and they got all these glossy, you know, presentations and all these flowery words about sustainability, reliable, you know, renewables, all this stuff, but they don't talk about the end game and what's going to happen to that land when these things are obsolete and don't produce the electricity that they did when they're spraying, speaking news out of the box. And so, that's, that's a concern I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, and thank you for being patient with one another, and this to conclude our meeting. Good night.